All right, first of all, any comments, anything you want to bring to the board before we get into the Act 13 discussion? Okay, very well. The new items of discussion include the grant policy for Act 13, a request from Tom Pellegrino, and a request from Glade Township, as well as 2018 tax mileage. We need to do that pretty quickly, don't we?
Yep.
Okay, very good. Does anyone on the board want to kick off the Act 13 discussion?
So, we, obviously, we've had a flurry of Act 13 requests for a variety of reasons, and it's basically drawn a light on the fact that we don't have an official Act 13 policy per se as to how the process is set up. What's happened in previous boards is they basically relied on Dan Glotz in order to handle the entire process. Dan created an application that municipalities, organizations could give to him. He was the one who basically reviewed the application and then handed it to the commissioners based on his own judgment of whether he thought it was applicable under the law. But at no time, to my knowledge, there's been like a written policy as to how to handle grants through Act 13. Obviously, we've had a series of requests from a variety of different sources, both governmental and non-governmental, and so it's basically driven this idea of we need to come up with, or we need to draft a policy, I think, in order to appropriate funds through Act 13. And I'll give you a couple of examples as far as what I think could be done, or what should be done. We, there are, technically, we should have three different policies. They would be similar in nature, but they would be a little bit different in the fact that it would deal with the three different buckets of Act 13 funding that we have access to. The first bucket, obviously, is the 13 eligible uses, which is the most cut and dry, I don't want to say cut and dry, but the most detailed list of uses that the law provides for. So I don't know that there's as much discussion about what that should, what that funding should be allocated for, but we should, I think, codify it in a policy.
Do you want to narrow it any further?
No, no, well, I think that we would have, I think that we could have the solicitor, or in conjunction with the solicitor, have a discussion about all of the 13 eligible uses and maybe clarify them to a greater extent. I'm not as concerned about the 13 eligible uses just because all of that funding in the current state has been allocated to pictometry, and like last year, we didn't get any of the 13 eligible uses funding at all. It's important to note that that funding comes from local unconventional gas well drilling, which we don't have a lot of in the county. Some counties have quite a bit, we do not. The second pot is the Marcellus Shale, the second and third parts are the Marcellus Shale Legacy Fund. The second pot is basically the Open Spaces and Beautification Pot. And then the third pot is for distressed bridges. So the distressed bridges is the largest pot that we happen to draw from. However, it's also the most, it's also one of the more regulated pots. So it's pretty clear that it's used for, you know, bridge projects for replacement. Even at that, the fund at its height, a year ago, we had roughly about $250,000. That, which doesn't, you know, you can't do any kind of a major bridge project with $250,000. So we ended up allocating 80 to one bridge project and I think like 25 to another. I think Glade had one bridge project and I can't remember where the other one went. But I think that everybody feels pretty clearly about what that pot of funding, you know, should go to or be utilized for. My thing with that is, again, that we codify some kind of policy as to, you know, you send an application to Dan Glotz, Dan Glotz reviews it, sends it to us, you know.
There has to be some sort of a local match. That was the one thing I do remember discussing with planning and zoning when Glade's application came through, is that we didn't want to just give them the money completely without any sort of contribution from the municipality.
Well, no, well, okay, so the previous policy was, or I've spoken policy, was that the bridge fund would be a 50-50 match. And as a result, frankly, the bridge fund never got used, and that's why it got up to $250,000, because nobody wanted to put, it was a hard sell. So basically, when we came in, we said, "Okay, no match." You know, we want to use this money for.
Well, there has to be some match. We did say, I think it was 5% or something.
Well, I mean, we need to discuss that and figure out what it's going to be if there is going to be a match. I mean, I agree with you, it's just, the money's so small.
Right, but just to throw things on paper, the three commissioners don't now have a number that sounds acceptable, five, seven, eight, 10?
Yeah.
Christian Morrison, do you have an opinion?
I'd really give more thought to that.
Great.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it's not something we have to decide today. So the second pot.
But we're generally in agreement that it shouldn't be 50%, because that was.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, my thing is, is I, that bucket gets probably $45,000 a year. I think that we, you know, trying to accrue it over a period of time, even if, even if you get it up to $300,000, it's still not enough to do like a major bridge project, like all year.
I understand that, that's not my concern. My concern is that we say, "Hey, municipalities, there's no match required," and then everybody applies and/or gets upset when it's all drained and nothing, and we can't help anybody anymore. So I'm suggesting that we either put a cap on the amount that goes out per year, or we put a match percentage that.
Okay, I mean, I'd be fine with five or 10, yes.
Just call it 7.5 for now. This isn't the policy itself, so we'll just throw this on here. And that can or cannot use, like, staff time and stuff like that.
Yeah, there would be a cash match, because nobody wants to have to follow that around.
Right, okay. Do we want ceiling, your name?
I mean, I don't, you know, I think that.
This one was 80?
Yeah.
So somewhere in that ballpark?
I would prefer we had a ceiling.
For now, let's just say 80, because that was the biggest one we.
Okay.
Okay, it sounds like this is pretty clear then.
Yep.
Want to move back to your more complicated bucket?
So the more complicated bucket is the Open Spaces and Beautification Fund. Now, the law around this is pretty vague. I shouldn't say it's pretty vague, it's just poorly worded. The Auditor General has acknowledged that. And there's a part of me that says it's poorly worded. There's a part of me that says that it's purposefully vague, so the counties have a lot of leeway in order to utilize it. And, hold on a second, I'm trying to dig up the email that I sent, focus on Act 13. Just because I want to read the law just really quick, just for everybody's information. Okay, there we go. So, the, just, the, so the part of the law, and the law, the thing that people have to remember too about Act 13 is that there are many layers to the law. So the tax or the fee generates a pool that is then separated into a lot of different funds. And again, the second two are funds that come to us from the state. So this is what the law says. 15% for the planning, acquisition, development, rehabilitation, and repair of greenways, recreational trails, open space, natural areas, community conservation, and beautification projects, community and heritage parks, and water resource management. Funds may be used to acquire lands for recreational or conservation purposes and land damaged or prone to drainage by storms or flooding. Funds shall be distributed to counties proportionally based on the population of the county as follows. And so the funding that we get is based on our population. So, for instance, I've brought an application, or an application has been given to the commissioners for the library theater renovation. From my perspective, that could be filed under a beautification project as it's an exterior renovation and it's a historic building. So I guess the clarity that we need to, one of the items that we need to clarify is, if we're going to grant money for a project, how are we going to define the parameters under the law here and that we can all agree on, so that, you know, when people come in and bring a project that we feel is clearly not under the law, that we have a reasoning behind it, you know? Most of the counties that deal with this funding on a regular basis have come together to create some kind of program that they utilize the funds for one way or the other, or a method to granting the funding. So a few of the things that I would propose are, with that bucket, we get roughly $35,000 a year. I would say that we take 20,000 and, well, actually, probably even do 25,000, and do a grant program with parameters like, it has to be, you know, community conservation and beautification projects, which is the most general element of that description, that we define what beautification is to the county. So like in my case, I would say that the funding should be able to be used for historic buildings, like buildings that are historic in nature, that are on the historic register, that they are utilized for exterior renovation, you know, public-facing, you know, facilities. The other thing would be that I feel personally like the money should really go to a nonprofit, like or nonprofit organizations or governmental organizations. I kind of have an issue with this money being used for the for-profit organizations. Again, the law does not state anywhere in this, in Act 13 law related to this fund that you can't give it to a private organization. I just think that it's a, you know, it's a public fund. We should really use it for nonprofit and for government.
But it does state that projects are to benefit the public and are developed under the control of a government agency or a nonprofit, and it.
Where?
The law does state that.
I.
It's in the legislation.
Do you know what, where the, what number?
I'll have to find it.
Because I've read through this, I don't know how many times, and there are other areas of the law that have regulations related to them, this section doesn't.
Well, either way, she's saying it's the law, and you're saying that's the way you want it anyway, so there's no conflict.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm, okay. That's fine.
Okay, so my recommendation would then be to create some sort of a rubric. Are you suggesting this is an annual cycle, so you're saying?
Yeah.
We get roughly 35,000 a year, 25 of that is going into a grant program.
Yeah.
The grant program presumably would have some sort of a cycle. It would open up annually for a period of time. People would, organizations, NGOs, or government entities would apply to the county for a certain amount of money.
Yep.
Under that 25,000.
Yep.
They would come pitch the board of commissioners presumably, where you want to create some sort of another commission in order to.
No, I mean, I don't have a problem with the commissioners being the arbiters of it. You know, rather than creating just another body that we'd have to appoint people to. And I think that that small of amount, it should be pretty straightforward in order to, you know, make that determination.
Okay, how long do you want the cycle open, and does this apply to all three?
Well.
Do we build them all three at once in like the first quarter of the year, or?
Yeah, I mean, I don't see why we don't do like one month or a month and a half. Like, you know, do January or February, or, you know, just do it at the beginning of the year. It's a slow time for us, I mean, and we would allocate the funds before anybody would hire a contractor.
Right, do you have an opinion?
And this would be overseen by our planning and zoning officer, correct?
Well, I mean, he would be the point of contact to get the applications, you know, and obviously, we could have part of the process be, he makes a recommendation.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I'm just saying that the commissioners would be, would be the ultimate deciders of where the money goes.
Okay, so this opens up for the first, let's say, particularly since we're in January already, we could probably turn this around in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Let's say the period opens up February and March or something. Or in the future, it could be whatever, the first quarter. You apply on the end of the first quarter, we meet within the first few weeks and review the applications, determine how much each gets, depending on which bucket they apply for, and they may not, they may not get the full thing, so.
Well.
Decide how we want. Now, question, why, why are we putting that other 10,000 roughly in reserve?
Okay, so the other 10,000, I think, should be discretionary for the commissioners and then also for the career center project. Like, so that could potentially pull a couple of thousand dollars. I don't know how many, it depends on how many projects people want to utilize for it. I just don't want the entire thing used up, because I think that some portion of it should be discretionary, you know?
For our home projects.
For our, for the projects driven by the commissioner's office in the county. And I mean, the thing is, is even if we started the grant program tomorrow at 25,000, we still have 70 left over right now, or 80 left over, so.
Okay, so we would just let that build up? If we didn't, let's say we didn't use that 10,000, or 11,000, or 8,000, or whatever, and it's up being, we just stack it away, and if in the future it gets big enough where we want to increase the 25 to something else, we could do that.
Yeah, I mean, because there's always the potential for us to have projects that we're trying to drive, you know, for instance, like the benches on the bike trail.
I just want to make sure that that doesn't turn into a kitty that looks like we're giving preferential treatment in the future. So if it's purely going to a county-driven project, then that's fine. But what I would not want to see is, "Well, you missed the opportunity, but we still have 5,000 left, so we'll just give it to you."
Well, and we could make that in the policy. You know, it's just to say that all other funds are to be utilized for county initiatives, you know? My thing with the other two, I honest, maybe the 13 eligible uses, but we really, at this point, I don't think that we're going to have any money in that, especially if it continues to be utilized for like pictometry. The bridge fund, I don't think that we should have a window, like a grant window for that. I think it should be ongoing. And the reason I say that is, like I said, for the longest time, that money was not granted. Like, so it's very hard to get the municipalities to utilize it as it is.
Okay, so all remaining goes to county project. You okay with that?
I would like, you know, it definitely needs to fall in line with the eligible use.
Of course. Yeah, overall, universal rule number one would be essentially that you can class all lots and then some ten. What do you want the rubric to look like? So, do you give weight towards, is it basically the, I would, I guess I will say this. I would prefer that when we sit down and have three organizations pitching, unless the three total stay under the 25. If we get in a position where we just have to start giving up to the remainder, we're going to want to rank it on something. So I would like to have a sheet of paper in front of me that says, you know, score one to five based on, you know, the number of people, residents that it impacts, the endurance of the thing. So, you know, will it actually have any kind of an economic impact? Like, rank it that way, and then you could average those, our assessment, and that way allocate based on some sort of formula. Otherwise, we'll probably be in a position where organizations are applying for more than they have, and we don't have any really good reason for giving them less than what they're asking for, or ranking one product over another if we don't fund one and we do fund another.
I don't, I don't, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I think that you can get into the area where you can make it maybe a little bit more complicated than it needs to be. I mean, I think that it's, this is just going to be a challenge of doing it, you know? If you want to come up with a rubric and pitch it as a part of the proposal, I'd be fine with that.
I mean, it's complicated until, and excess work until it becomes needed.
Well, no, I know what you're saying, that there's a potential at some point for somebody to be unhappy with the outcome, you know? That's part of this job, unfortunately.
Of course. Well, so this one's pretty clear, and this one's pretty clear. Well, I don't know, I just think that these could apply generally.
Yeah.
So what are some things that we would want to give weight to? From my perspective, it would be longevity of the project. I don't want to dump, you know, $10,000 into something that's.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So what are some of those factors consideration?
Maybe historic significance.
So what historic is he?
Historic.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry, I haven't had a glass of water in over an hour.
I think your first suggestion will have a number of people it will impact.
Historic, sure. Significant, you said?
Yeah.
I would welcome any comment, if you have any ideas.
Economic impact?
I'm willing.
Okay, anything else?
Jobs created? I mean, I guess you put that under economic impact, but I.
My job, please, you're fine. I didn't end up putting that longevity there. Another idea might be that you wouldn't want, I'll pick on my hometown zip, you wouldn't want multiple applications year after year going to a specific municipality, so.
Yeah, or specific organizations, so do like five-year, 10-year.
Yeah, that hasn't been, how do you want to phrase that? My point would be, I wouldn't want all of it to be dumped into one municipality.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So something I would want weighted so that, you know, if, if any project in that municipality ended funded.
Yeah, so you, you, I'd say that you do like a five or a 10-year cycle.
Do you have an opinion? I mean, it needs to be population-based in some sense, because.
Why don't we just do this first company, so the commissions come in, so the money's used.
Would he say that like two years in a row, the same entity doesn't get?
I understand that, but I'm talking overall.
You're saying do the web cycle completely?
Yeah.
Well, mainly because it would get drained and nothing, I would think.
Well, I, but I, I think that there should be a period of time, like.
Well, I understand that, and I was talking about something totally different. And I do believe that you should put maybe some stipulation as to Glade Township just used the bridge fund.
Oh, that's another question, do you want? So I was looking at just as in that bucket.
Overall.
You want overall? I know earlier it said a number of people have impacted, but kind of learning from the hub test, do we also want to give extra weight to it not affecting any one particular constituency, so?
I mean, I'm going to be honest, I think that if you put too many parameters on it, it's going to be difficult to get applications. I mean, we really haven't had hardly any until this year.
This isn't a parameter, this is just a justification internally for picking them.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, sure, constituencies.
Well, you're right, we haven't had much activity on this, but now we're collecting open.
Well, yeah, well, I mean, part of that's because we've gone around and promoted it to everybody to use it. I mean, prior, like, nobody, there's a lot of municipalities still don't know that we have access to these funds. And, you know, after a few articles in the paper, everybody starts, you know, being interested in it.
We could ask our planning director to maybe set a communication with our municipalities for that they're aware of these funds.
Well, he does. He, you know, he goes to the cog, I mean, he, he's kind of, he's been.
How many go to the cog?
I understand that, a lot of people go to the cog, but he sends emails to all the municipalities and a number of other things, like, you know, it's like a lot of things. People don't apply for it until they see somebody else get something out of it. Like, "Oh, why did they get a fancy new bridge, I want a new bridge." Well, we've been telling you about this for 10 years, you know?
I think we can wear information going to the county, what we know that is available, what our new policies are.
Yeah, we can definitely send out a letter. All right, so my recommendation at this point would be to, I guess I could draft up a bit of a project charter, send it off to the planning and zoning office, and whomever there, Dan decides to have write this up, could write it up, but come up with a policy, come up with the rubric, and then we can bring it back to a future work session in order to review it. Does that sound reasonable?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. With that in mind, is it premature then to discuss the Act 13 funding requests from Pellegrino and from Glade Township?
I think so.
Okay, so we should push that off for at least a couple of weeks, I think.
No, I was going to say, why not discuss it?
Because we don't have that in place.
Well, I, okay, I mean, I just, I, I think that both of those, I mean, are we, are. For the Pellegrino request, I mean, that's for a private company, like a for-profit company. I mean, do we, I mean, wouldn't that be out just based on what our discussion here today? And then Glade Township, I mean, can anybody state that that, them putting a new roof on?
It didn't sound like a beautification project, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, even just by law, I don't think that it fits under those, either one of those bits. I mean, that's without getting too deep in the weeds on anything else. And so rather than making them wait for us, I mean, I think that we should just state to them that we don't feel like this fits under the law.
Christian Morrison, do you have an opinion?
I think that it's appropriate for Mr. Glotz to inform them of the law and how we.
Okay. If they disagree with the interpretation, they can come back to us.
Yeah, no, I mean, I don't, I don't think that they should be denied the opportunity to apply in future rounds if they feel.
Well, sure. Okay, sounds like we're in agreement there. 2018 tax mileage, who wants to talk about that?
Well, it's staying the same, so.
Yeah, it's not much of a discussion, right?
I agree.
It's also hoping that we do look at.
Yeah, we didn't pass that yet, so that needs to be done at Wednesday's meeting.
No.
No, next, yeah, next, next Wednesday's meeting. Okay?
So we'll do both of those?
We don't have the, we don't have the agenda even started yet for that meeting, but. We'll add those two things, are there any other things that come to mind right now that need to be on the agenda, just so it can be typed up for next Monday's meeting?
I'm going to, our, we got the application from the library theater, and so I sent that to Attorney Sharif, so he'll write an opinion and send it to everybody. I'd like that added to the agenda, because we've tabled it two meetings, so.
Okay. Very good. Any project updates? I know we started the meeting late, and we have another one coming right up, so I don't mean to belabor it if you don't want to discuss any projects.
What, what meetings do you have coming up? I don't have.
Executive session regarding the.
Oh, that, yeah.
Lawsuit thing.
I thought it was the third term, it's not. I thought it was something fun. It's like, ooh, another meeting, is it a fun one? No.
I don't think I've ever had that reaction. All right, hearing of project updates, let's see, anything on your schedule you want to raise? I don't think there's anything abnormal for me this week.
Oh, I have one question.
Sure.
Does anybody have the League of Women Voters Resolution?
Yes.
No, you, you responded, you do not have it.
He responded that he doesn't have it. I think I have it on-
So that I can at least get it on for next Mondays?
Yeah, next Monday's work session, okay.
Okay, actually, next Monday is the state of the county, right?
Yeah.
All right, so we'll still do what we would normally do. Okay. Yeah, the only abnormal thing is I'll be taking a sick day, half-sick day on Friday. Won't be around. That's it for me. Any general discussion? All right, anything from the-
I would say public, but you're all not really public. It's public, mostly.
All right, and I guess we're adjourned. Thank you.